Sure.
You know the whole thing.
Does it seem if I move, if I can picture people speaking? If I like walk over or whatever, you don't mind?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Indianapolis Charter School Board on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. For those of you watching at home, welcome. And we have not a big agenda tonight, but we have some important things to consider as we deal with and we try to do everything we can to improve the lives of the children in our community. So those of you who are here in person, thank you for being here tonight. It's very, very important work, and I'd like to turn this over to Shayna to get us going. Shayna from the staff.
Hi, everyone. My name is Shayna Cavassos. I'm the Assistant Director of Communications and Operations with the Office of Education and Innovation. Our director is not here this evening, so this is my job to kind of lead us through this meeting. Just a quick overview of our agenda. We are being streamed live on Channel 16. And for that reason, if for at any point tonight you will be speaking at a microphone, please make sure that you flip the switch next to it that turns on the light that indicates that it is picking up your voice. We want to make sure everyone's heard, and that goes for board members as well. So the first thing tonight is the board will be considering a remote meeting policy, and then we will move into the main portion of the agenda where we will be hearing from Engaged Community Schools on their charter school application. So we will jump right in. Just wanted to highlight, the board has been presented with the remote meeting policy. It was put together by the Office of Corporation Counsel here at the City of Indianapolis, written to comply with House Enrolled Act 1437 after the expiration of the Governor's Public Health Order earlier this year. Just a couple highlights. Essentially, the board to participate virtually, if members will be making use of that, they have to be able to be signal, they must be able to communicate with each other and have the public also attend and observe those meetings. Virtual participants would count towards quorum, but they may only participate in final action if they can be seen and heard. And then all votes taken during a meeting, where there are virtual members, must be taken by a roll call vote. At least 50% of members must also be physically present at a meeting, even if there is a member participating virtual, virtually. So just with some of these things in mind, the board will continue to prioritize in-person meetings, just to make sure we are able to maximize transparency and ease of communication between board members, our presenters, and the public. And so Stephen, if there's anything else you would like to add, otherwise, we can move forward.
Thank you, Shayna. It's so in short, we need 50% of the board in person in order to take action. And if we have, we have virtual participants from the board, they need to be both seen and heard, correct?
That's correct.
That's the gist of this, and it is to accommodate the situation for as long as we need to accommodate the situation. But it is, it is also in adherence with other policy that the city and frankly, the state is, is taking. So I would entertain a motion, unless my colleagues have questions. Anyone with a question?
When you say they have to be seen, does that mean they're going to be up on the screen, or does someone just watch them on a computer?
So we would have to make sure that there is the appropriate video technology that would allow that. That has not been in the past during the pandemic. We obviously did all virtual, so everyone was at a computer. And in, you know, prior times, that was not part of a stipulation. So we would have to figure that out, which is, I think, why we want to try to prioritize in-person meetings as much as possible, just to avoid any hiccups there.
Any other questions, my friends? I would entertain a motion from one of you to accept and pass along our acceptance of the policy establishing procedures for members' participation in meetings by electronic means of communication.
Yes.
That's a, that's a, that's a move to approve. Is that a move to approve?
Yes.
That's a move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
With Mr. Dominguez. I like to call him Ace Dominguez tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing no other votes, it's unanimous, and we can move on with the rest of the agenda. Thank you very much, everyone.
So just a quick overview of where we're at in the charter school application process. This is the kind of final step in our formal process. Previously, we heard from the folks in Engaged Community Schools back in April when they came to discuss their prospectus. They were then invited to submit a full application and to revise any of their plans based on the feedback from the board and from the OEI staff. And then now we are at the full application hearing, after which there would be later today, a vote on whether to approve the charter. Just to reiterate, I think many of you are here, but for anyone else who is joining us, Engaged Community Schools is proposing a charter that would potentially locate in the Mid-North neighborhood and center township, though this would of course depend on any potential partnership with IPS. They would be looking to restart a school in the fall of 2023. And you can see some additional details about some of their enrollment goals. The school leader who is with us tonight is Brandon House, as well as their board chair, Dave Roberts. You can just kind of skim here a summary of their mission and model, but they are essentially focused on project and place-based learning and opportunities that would help students be able to apply their learning to their community and kind of use that knowledge to improve themselves as leaders and learners. They are interested in also working with community volunteers to facilitate those projects. In our review of the prospectus and the full application, in this case, we noted a few areas of progress from the prospectus round, namely additional details on prospective community partners and engagement that the school and its leadership have undertaken so far, as well as more details about how their instructional model and kind of the place and project-based learning would, what that would look like, and then more about how that would fit into some of their curricular choices as well. We want them to continue to focus on ensuring staffing of both kind of from the teacher and classroom level, as well as for their leadership team, and as they build out their board and are able to ensure that they're meeting kind of all of the various needs that the school have, and complementing each other in the things that Brandon and existing board members bring to the table as well. We also want to ensure that they're thinking through both community engagement, communications with potential families and students, but also meaningful partnerships with families, and what that really looks like outside of kind of more typical or day-to-day communications. We know that it's important for families to feel included and to be part of the work that's happening in their school building, and particularly in a restart environment that is essential to a school being able to move forward successfully. Additionally, we hope that they will continue to focus on strategies for recruitment, both in enrolling new families and then retention in keeping students at the school who may be going through a transition during a restart time. You know, that is always a challenge that new schools face, and we hope they will continue to work to ensure that their existing families are interested in, you know, moving forward with them and that they are reaching out and doing as much as possible to encourage the growth that they would be seeking as well. So with that, I would invite Brandon and members of his team kind of up towards the front to tell you more about their school and kind of the updates from the last time you heard from them. Brandon, there's a clicker on the podium, and you'll be able to direct the presentation. I believe the microphone is already on, so you should be good to go there.
Well, excuse me. Thank you once again for allowing us to come and share a little bit about Engaged Community Schools. I'm here joined by my board president, David Roberts. And so we are excited to share a little bit more about Engaged Community Schools. So as I share a little bit about Engaged Community Schools, just a reminder, we are about engaging minds, serving communities, and transforming the future. And as I mentioned earlier, I'm here with my board and just so grateful for the leadership that they provide for our school. As you can see, they come from diverse backgrounds and diverse job experiences, and we're glad to have them on board to lead us with this development. A little bit about myself, I am in year 15 of education, and all of my educational experience has been in schools that are in need of turnaround or transformation. I'm proud to say that I started my educational career here in Indianapolis, in the Indianapolis Public Schools, and then moved to Wayne Township before moving down to New Orleans, where I led a small charter school, which turned into a charter school network. One success that I am proud to share is that during that time as a charter school leader in New Orleans, we came into a school that was, was doing poorly academically, and we were tasked with moving that relatively quickly. We improved within a year, we improved that the school performance level, nearly two levels within one year. And because of that academic success, we were able to increase our enrollment from about 300 students to about 1,100 students over that seven-year timeframe. We were known for having the lowest mobility rate. We were able to retain about 94% of our students each year. Only 6% of our students moved from year to year. And that was just because we were able to build a great community of parents and families that were invested in what we were doing. And so I'd like to talk a little bit about some of those successes, because I believe that those successes are transferable. And the mindset that goes with those successes is we want to have a high level of accountability for all in every single capacity of what we do. And so thinking about Engaged Community Schools and how down in New Orleans, we led with that same mindset, here are some things that we were thinking about. We wanted to make sure that we had a strong academic foundation, beginning with foundational literacy skills, foundational numeracy skills, and then developing these critical thinking skills that are, that transfer into the job market, that make our students' career in college prepared. We also wanted to make sure that our students take ownership and, and are engaged in the, in the curriculum that we have. And so at the school that I led down in New Orleans, we were an art-integrated school, where we took artwork to sort of capstone the learning that we had. And so as they were going through the, the rigorous lessons that we provided, they were able to solidify the learning by creating a piece of artwork and then sharing that with the community. And the last and most vital piece is that community involvement. Because our students wanted to take pride in the things that they had learned, we wanted to bring in parents, guardians, stakeholders, people that lived in and around our community, so they could see how our students are learning and growing. And we want to bring those successes to Engaged Community Schools. So a little bit of our, about our school, our school is focused on making sure that every child sees themselves as a leader who can transform their future and the future of their community. And we do this by developing empowered, compassionate, creative leaders that are taking their skills and their talents and using that to serve their community, whether it's locally or globally. So in a nutshell, that basically means that we are providing a quality education in partnership with the community. Digging deeper into that community piece, we wanted to make sure that we highlight some of the things that really make us a little bit different in our design. And one of those things is our community teaching partners. Now, the community teaching partners are adults that live and work in the community that will help co-lead what we have as our capstone project. So we're incorporating some of that project-based learning. And as we find adults that have skills and a particular skill set, they will have the opportunity to co-lead a capstone project with our teachers. We also have our service learning projects where they can, our students can learn and develop their leadership skills and go out into the community and, and serve the community twice a year, once in the fall and once in the spring. And then finally, we want to continue to bring that shared community aspect, where stakeholders can continue to invest in the lives of the children that we serve. This is a slide that we showed in our last meeting when we talked. It's a part of our strategic plan. And those three pillars of our strategic plan are academics, culture, and community. And that's all upheld by a strong operational oversight. And digging deeper into the academic approach, one of the things that we really wanted to highlight was that we're really focused on having a rigorous academic experience that's rooted in these evidence-based practices. So we want to start with good teaching practices, making sure that our teachers are equipped with those skills to, to teach our students effectively, whether it's in a whole group, whether it's small group. We also want to make sure that we have an effective proven curricula that helps our students continue to be prepared for the real world outside of school. When appropriate, we'll continue to have our teachers facilitate projects. So this may not necessarily be every single unit or every single lesson that we teach. There may not be an opportunity for a project to occur. But when we, when it's appropriate, when it ties appropriately to our standards and our skills, we want to make sure that our teachers are prepared to facilitate those projects, to continue to solidify and capstone that learning. And then we want to invite community teaching partners, as I, as I mentioned earlier, to deepen the experience, to show that these are skills that are really applicable outside of the learning. Another part of our academic approach is that we want to focus, especially in year one, knowing that we're going to have kids that are going to be significantly academically behind. We want to make sure that we're focusing on building those foundational literacy skills. And those foundational literacy skills are going to help us propel into that deep, rigorous work of the, the curriculum that we have. And so especially in literacy, we want to make sure that we're focusing on digging into those complex texts. We want to make sure that those students are ready to pull evidence from the text to prove an argument. We want to make sure that they're building their knowledge around nonfiction, because as those students move into the more difficult classes in high school and in college, this is going to be a critical part of their learning. On the numeracy side, we want to make sure those students are having those foundational numeracy skills, where they can fluently move through those math facts. But moving deeper and beyond that, we want to make sure that they have a curricula that's helping them dig deeper into a specific set of concepts, mathematical concepts. And we want our students to demonstrate that they can take that learning from kindergarten through the eighth grade, having that coherence. And then beyond that, balancing the fluency with the conceptual development with the real-world application. And then finally, talking a little bit about our culture and community, our number one priority with culture and community in our strategic plan is focusing on partnerships that connect the students to, and the families to important resources. We know that, thinking about the hierarchy of needs, we have to provide what is best for our students first, so that way they can access that learning. And so I want to jump down all the way to the bottom and talk a little bit about one thing that we've added to our staffing model, which is the school community coordinator. And that school community coordinator is going to be a vital piece of our school, as they'll be the liaison between schools and families and community organizations, making sure that they're connecting our families to the resources that they need. They will also be that coordinator that will help identify the proper community teaching partners that will be, that will be in our classrooms, helping to co-lead those projects at the end of each unit that we will, will do a project with. Another crucial piece that I wanted to highlight was that, especially in the first years, we really want to have a strong community advisory group. And this is a group of parents that live in the community. And I like to name it Hanging with House. It's, it's something that I did at my old school. And it was really a cool opportunity for us just to sit down and listen to the families as they have great ideas for us to continue to move our school forward. And as Shayna mentioned, this is, this is a crucial time. If we're going to be in a restart situation, we have to know what our families are looking for and what they need, and we have to be ready to provide that. Speaking about our community connections, we've had lots of great conversations with lots of great organizations over the last few months. Here are a highlight of a few of them. We're also excited to, to highlight some of our conversations that we've had with colleges and universities, thinking about teacher pipeline and making sure that we have great teachers coming into our school as well. And in a nutshell, to conclude, we just, we want to provide a quality education in partnership with the community. So if students attend our school, they will receive a rigorous instruction that is applicable to all walks of life. They will learn to use their knowledge to support and lead their community. They will learn to, from other community leaders who are already doing great things in their community. And we want to continue to invite our community into our schools to invest and, and be, provide mentorship, invest resources, whatever it might be. So with that, thank you so much, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you very much. It's very good to see you again. Mr. Roberts, good to see you again as well. So thank you for that presentation. Let me say in my haste to start the meeting, I did not do a roll call, but I will let the record show that in attendance is Marco Dominguez, I'm calling him Ace tonight, Dr. Preston Adams, Pam Hickman, and Brisa Ortega, and myself, the Chair, Stephen Stolen. So let me look around, and we'll start with Ms. Ortega. Do you have some questions?
I do have some questions for you. And I always hate going first. Okay, so you know, you seem like you have a lot, you've made a lot of progress since we last heard from you. But I, I do have some concerns. So you talked about this, the literacy skills being a big part of your school and just a big part of the academic approach. But can you tell us about how you're going to help the non-English speakers and these, and to gain these literacy skills? Because I, I believe your, your plan for non-English speakers or multilingual students is not really laid out yet.
Yeah, so we've, we are focusing really deeply on making sure that every teacher, no matter what subject area you teach, they're focused on getting the PSYOP training and also understanding that they get the WEATA training as well. And so with the WEATA training, there are those opportunities. You can look through their, their plan that they have. We will provide the can-do statements to our teachers, so they understand, no matter what level our students are coming in at, through that WEATA assessment that we'll provide as students enter in, that they'll understand how they can instruct those students. We want to make sure that all of our students, like I mentioned, all of our teachers, like I mentioned, are PSYOP trained, which means that they basically have all of those skills sets ready to support in any way possible. We also know that with that WEATA training that we'll receive, or the WEATA assessments that we'll give to our students, they give us the student levels, which will help us develop their individual language learning plan. And so with that, we want to make sure that we are providing the, the right teachers to support that. So we will, as we get a better understanding of the students that are enrolling into our schools, we want to make sure that we have the staffing to, to help support that. So we also want to make sure that our ELLs teachers that are supporting those students, they are certified and that we're properly staffed to support those number of students that we have in our schools.
Okay, so I'm sorry, did you say that you kind of want to see what kind of, what the enrollment looks like before coming up with a plan for those students?
So we, we will, we will, we have a preliminary plan of making sure that all of our, our teachers and staffs are prepared with the WEATA training and with the PSYOP training. But as we understand more about how many students are coming in, we'll continue to staff up and to build a staff around that, that is, that is certified specifically for ELL students.
Okay, so is it something where you'd have the basics at the beginning?
Absolutely.
Okay. I also want to talk about your, your community connections. So there, you have a pretty big list of, of, I guess, organizations that would provide some kind of support. But is there, has it been established, like what exactly they'd be doing, or how they would be providing support, or what kind of support they would be providing?
So we've had lots of preliminary conversations with a lot of those organizations. Some of them, we have established some relationships with to continue to think about how they can support us at our schools. And many of them, they, they are just continuing to see where we're going to be located, because that's an important part of how they function as an organization. But all of those, those organizations that are listed on the application are people that we've had positive conversations with, that have willingly given resources, connections, and helped us continue to hear from parents in particular, but also hear from other community leaders around the city.
And, you know, positive conversations are great, but is there something that, is there something in place that says they will be a supporter? They will be providing something?
Yeah, so, you know, continued on after, you know, the approval of the charter, and we will continue to have those conversations with them. A lot of those people that are, a lot of those organizations that are listed are people that we have conversations with on a regular basis. So I'm continuously updating them on our progress and how we're doing. And so they're eagerly waiting the results of tonight's meeting, as well as, as we find more about where we're going later on. So, you know, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of those organizations are really connected to their community. And so they want to make sure that if we are located in their community, they're going to provide those resources for us. And we've had those conversations as, as of now, yes.
Okay. And switching to enrollment, do you have, or do you guys have a plan if you don't get the expected number, or if you don't hit your, your range, or I don't know, if you have a goal?
Yeah, so we've had several conversations about this, but we are prepared, you know, first off, we, we have taken that number of around 450, just knowing that that is on average what is in the location of the Mid-North area. But we recognize that, you know, there could be a possibility that we don't meet that number, in which case, we'd have to go back and look at our staffing and make sure that we have the right staffing, so that way we can support our, support the school financially, you know. And we'll continue to think about, you know, in the event that we, we don't have a, a location, we'll, we'll think about whether, whether or not we need to co-locate with another, excuse me, with another school or organization. We'll also need to think about, you know, just how we're going to proceed forward with finances moving ahead. So we've had several conversations around that and are prepared for if we don't meet that staff.
Okay. Well, I think those are all the questions I had for you.
Thank you. We'll turn to We'll turn to Mr. Dominguez. I'm calling him Ace tonight, my friends, because he got a hole in one on the golf course today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Nice seeing you again. Pleasure.
Thank you.
I have a suggestion also regarding the community connections. I will suggest that you talk to the Immigrant Welcome Center, the International Center, La Plaza, Indiana Latino Institute, Indiana Latino Expo, that also they might provide some help with the connections that you might have. Because of the location, I mean, they might help, they might be a good part for you guys, so please, I do suggest that you contact them. How do you expect the community to really get involved with Engage? Because everybody talks about, you know, the beautiful things that the community will be part of that, that the parents will be involved, but sometimes it's hard. So how do you expect that?
Absolutely. It is very hard, and especially knowing, in my experience, you know, down in New Orleans, we had a very similar situation where we took a school and had to restart it, and we had to gain the trust of the community. But one of the approaches that we're taking here is that you'll see that some of the organizations that I've listed are neighborhood associations or neighborhood centers. And so I've had several conversations with the leaders of those neighborhood centers in thinking about how we could come in and be a tutor, to start tutoring in those organizations before our school even opens, just to show that we understand academics and that we also are committed to this work. You know, part of our model is that we want our students to be leaders in the community, but we're not going to ask our students to do something that we wouldn't be willing to do ourselves. So that means that we're going to go out to the community organizations, we're going to volunteer, and I've done that in several organizations, where we're going to just be a face without asking, to say, "We're here to support your child because we care about them." So I think that's the first part. After the school opens, we want to continue that mindset and that model. Like I said, the community advisory groups, it may start off small with one or two parents, but we want those conversations to be had with parents and guardians, and just listen to them and hear about what their needs are. And then we want to encourage them to share with their friends and other family members about the great things that we're doing with our school. We want to make sure, as I mentioned earlier, that we honestly believe that when you provide a family with a quality education and a quality experience, then they will be proud of their school and they want to tell others about it. And so that's going to be a part of it as well, is just building the pride and the confidence in the school that they attend and knowing that the child is attended to, that they know, we know who they are as a person and as a student, and that will transfer over to that as well. Obviously, we're thinking about all of those other approaches as well, in terms of strategic approaches to get more students into our school and more families invested in our school. So we want to be in all of those events happening around the city, whether it's a part of the Indianapolis Police Department, where they're having some of their days where we can come out and just be a part of those, whether it's being a part of a local event that's happening within our community. We want to be in those events as well, so.
Engage is a beautiful word. It's a beautiful, beautiful word. In your own words, what that means to you?
That's a great question. Engage to me basically essentially means that we are invested and connected and intertwined together as a community to make our community grow. And so even from, you know, our logo, where you see the letter E is encircled by the C, we want to make sure that Engage is encompassed by our community, so we're all engaged in making sure that we're continuously making our community great.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Marco. Dr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Mr. House, I have a couple of questions, a little different question on the enrollment. I noticed that year one is projected at 450, and by year seven, 500, which if my math is correct, is a growth of 50 students over a six-year period, or an average of about four per year. Can you explain the methodology behind that strategy?
Yes, so from my experiences that I've had in New Orleans, we were a slow-growth model, and we had a very different experience where we enrolled students, and year over year, we had about 200 students each year, 200 student growth each year. And the one thing that I noted from that experience was that we had more focus on student enrollment and less focus on student academics. And if we're going to be a school that is taking on restart school, we have to be very intentional about building the academics first before we think about student growth. And so we really want to take those first three to four years to really understand who we are academically and instructionally, and make sure we have a very strong focus on our academics first before we start taking on growth. And so I want to make sure that as we head into that, that's where our focus is first. And then beyond four or five years, we can think about whether or not we want to expand beyond 500 students.
What, if any, retention strategy is embedded in this?
So the biggest retention strategy is really about our community, which, you know, I've said it a couple of times here, but I honestly think, especially because I've seen it happen, is that when you give a child a face and a name, and you know their family, and you know where they come from and where they're going, they want to be back at your school. I just spoke to a parent not too long ago who said, "Don't tell me about the numbers. Don't tell me about any of that. I want to hear that my child is going to be able to get into college or get a job after this, not that you did whatever else." And so we want to be that school where we know our students, and we want to be a school that allows them to be proud of what school they attend, and then they can tell others about where they attend. So that's the retention strategy, number one. Obviously, you know, when we think about some of those smaller things, sibling priority and things like that, as we start to enroll students, that's going to be an incentive as well. But number one, first and foremost, is that our teachers and our staff will care about our students and where they live and where they come from.
Okay. Good, that's good to hear, because it sounds like you're looking to start with a bang, and then hopeful that you will retain, because you don't have much growth per year built in, at least the way the strategy is being presented.
Right.
All right. One other question, your faith-based organizations, what is the projected role for these, those organizations? You list two, Mount Zion and Common Ground. What are the roles? What kind of discussions have you had with those churches?
Yeah, so I had a great discussion, number one, with the pastor from Common Ground, and he just basically gave me a clear understanding of the Mid-North area, helped me understand who lives and works in those areas. And so really, he is a willing partner in just building connections in and around the community. When I spoke to the pastor from Mount Zion, they have one of the oldest black churches here in Indianapolis, and he's very proud of that, and he's proud of the community that's surrounding it. They also have our Early Learning Center that we talked a little bit about, and we talked a little bit about having some preliminary discussions about building some sort of early learning center pipeline from his center to our school at some point, if we were to be in the Mid-North area.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Pam Ace Hickman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, it's nice to see someone as excited to do something very important for students. Although you do realize it'll be a roller coaster ride from here tonight to the day you start your first class.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that takes a lot of energy, and I see that you have that, so that's encouraging to me. So question-wise, I have just a few. You talked about sitting down with your families and engaging them, and I find that families of students that aren't very successful in school are very shy about coming to school because all they ever got when they went to school was bad news. So they would like to come and hear good news. So how will you get those parents to get in there and engage with you?
This is probably one of my favorite parts about the school, is engaging with the parents. And so small things, you know, I've had several interactions with parents throughout my career that they themselves had a terrible experience as a student, and they projected onto the school that their child is attending. And so it's meeting them in the carpool line and just greeting them and saying hello, asking about their job, whatever it might be. It's also making those unexpected phone calls home and saying, "Hey, your child is doing, I'm just glad to see your child is here," and building those connections, and then asking a small question, so that way you can build personally from that student, from that parent to yourself. I'm a parent, I have children myself that are school-aged, and so it's always great to have those common conversations with parents and let them know that I'm in it just as much as you are, and I want your children to succeed just as much as I want my children to succeed. And so once they see that, then they're willing to come in. Having that policy where any parent can come in, talk to the secretary, and schedule a meeting with me, and I'll make time to listen to them.
It's important to retrain them for what education is really supposed to be about.
Absolutely.
My other question is, being, one of my jobs in my past life was teaching, and when you bring them all in, you're going to have, I don't know about you, but we only had like 12 students at the state school for the deaf in one class, so we still had three or four, you know, levels. How are you going to deal with those students that are coming in so far behind without neglecting the students that are doing well?
Absolutely. So I think it's really preparing our teachers to think strategically in those lessons that they're building and developing about all of those levels first. And so we believe that it is an issue of equity, that we provide all of our students, no matter what academic level they come in at, we want them to get the grade-level academics that they're receiving, but we want to make sure that the teachers are prepared to scaffold up to that academic level that they should be receiving. And so within our lesson plans that we develop, we're going to allow our teachers to think about, what does it look like for a student who is almost there? What does it look like for a student who is partially there? What does it look like for a student who's further off? And how can we get them there? We'll also have interventions. I like to call them win time, what I need, and this is a time where the students can have a small group where they're really getting those targeted pieces of instruction, so that way they know what they need to get before they walk into their next lesson. So we're thinking a little bit about that intervention, also thinking a little bit about accelerating them, so we may have students that are two or three grade levels behind. And we know that we don't have the opportunity to go back and reteach all of that, so we've got to do a little bit of front-loading instructionally in those small group times to prepare them for the lesson that's coming up down the line. So we're going to work with our teachers to make sure that they are instructionally prepared to think about all of those levels.
And my last question deals with, I'm a firm believer that we are not doing our high school students a service by not having them job-ready when they graduate at 18, that they should be doing some kind of training, if not totally prepared to enter college. So I noticed that you mentioned that, that you want to get them out into the community. And I once was at a graduation party for a student, I won't say what school, and the father and mother said, the one thing they really relished, because their son was very shy, was that from the day one to the day they graduated, they had to get up in front of class, in front of people, so that when they went out into the community for these engagements, they were prepared to at least look as like they knew what they were talking about when they got there. And I really think that that, teaching the children that, is just so important for them to not feel second-rated.
Absolutely. And it's important that I note that, you know, our model is a K-8 model specifically because of that reason. You know, in my previous experience, we were pre-K through 12, and watching some of my high school students who weren't prepared to have a face-to-face conversation, and I knew they knew material, but they couldn't articulate it. This is another reason why I decided to start Engage Community, was because we wanted our students at an early age to find that leader inside of them and be ready to bring it out when it matters most.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. It's very good to see you again. Thank you. And thank you for addressing many of the things that we talked about when we were together last time, and all my colleagues really appreciate that, so thank you. I want to hop on a couple of questions my colleagues had, and I'll go right back, go right back where we were, Pam. Tell me, give me an example of how you're going to engage a kindergartner with the community. What's their community, or first grader, what's their community project look like? And how does that evolve?
So this is actually a real-life situation. It's partially the inspiration behind Engage Community Schools. So as I was leading my school in New Orleans, we were an art-integrated school, we had a grandmother who was a business owner. She owned an ice cream shop, but she was in sort of a situation where her business was failing. Through random conversation, she mentioned to one of our teachers that her business was failing, and they came up with this great idea. In kindergarten, these students were talking about having, they were building up to persuasive essays, but not in, like you would see in a fifth-grade session, but in kindergarten. And so they were talking about advertising and making sure that they could build an argument through advertising. So what they decided to do was, this grandmother, they learned a little bit about her business, and they created through art advertisements for her business, paintings and things like that that they had. And they had to share those advertisements with community members. But what made it even more special was, after they painted these advertisements and they were ready and practiced their presentation, they took it to her shop, they posted it up on her gallery wall, which is just one wall in her shop, and on one evening, we invited all of the kindergarteners' parents to come to the ice cream shop to see the project, but it was really an opportunity to come and be a part of the ice cream shop. So not only did they buy ice cream, but they got to see their child's project. And so it was really a cool opportunity for the students to build their skills, to see the work that they did and how it affected their community.
Ice cream, never a bad idea. Never a bad idea. I'd like to go back to Dr. Adams' question about the slow-growth model. So what if it goes really well? And it's growth faster than you expected? That's what happened in NOLA.
Correct, correct. Yeah, you know, I think it's going to be very intentional, it'll be a conversation between myself and the board to think about what our next steps are, but I think we're pretty aligned on, we do not want to, we don't want to ruin the instructional integrity of our school first. If there's a demand, which there was definitely a demand in New Orleans, we were a K-5 school, they came to us when their students were in fourth grade and said, "We can't send our students anywhere else. Can you build a middle school?" And we did. They did the same in high school, and we did the same. But we really have to be more intentional, learning from that experience. We have to be more intentional about how to make sure that our instructional integrity doesn't falter.
Yeah, will you, go ahead.
If I could just add one thing, I think if that were the case, and we expect it to be the case, we'd be happy to share lessons learned and best practices with peer institutions throughout the city.
Awesome. The, and while I'm glad, thank you, and I'm wondering about how you feel the financial pressures of not growing? Because there are going to be financial, there's going to be inflation and things that are going to be, that are going to give you budgetary pressures of those things you've talked about in the leadership?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think that's, once again, that's where we lean on the expertise of the board to make those decisions. And we've had this discussion before around, we want to make sure that we have that instructional integrity, but we also, financial integrity is important as well. So it's going to be a balance and rely on those expertise.
Yeah, thankfully, our board has a good diverse mix of talents, and one of the members, our treasurer, is a financial expert, and she will be guiding us and helping the rest of the board make sure that we're on a solid foundation.
Yeah, it'll be important, because Brandon's going to need to use this energy in the hallways of his school. The, can you tell me, you've had wonderful experiences, and you're clearly a charismatic talent, all that, what did you? talent and all that, what did you learn not to do in your run in New Orleans?
So, you know, I could go through plenty of-
You don't need to give me a lot, just something.
You know, I think the biggest thing that I learned not to do, I think is extremely important in being a charter school leader, is that I don't want to come into any community and say, I have all of the answers. And I don't want to come into any community and say that we are going to fix everything. I want to be able to learn and listen to the people that live and work in that community because I believe in an asset-based mindset. And so I believe that there are already great things happening in that community and I want to be able to come in and continue to contribute to what is already there. So I don't want to be the leader that is so enthusiastic that it's overbearing, but instead to be able to sit back and listen and learn and say, you're right and I'm willing to go down that road with you.
Are you already interacting with some of the school leaders in Indianapolis?
Absolutely.
Has that been helpful?
It's been extremely helpful, absolutely. And they, all of the leaders that I've connected with have been willing to share resources and ideas.
Great. I really liked seeing the growth that you made with your potential community partners, folks that you've been having conversations with. I'm especially happy to see there's a diversity of geography there because I know, in a sense, Engage has its heart set in a certain part of the city, but you're, but in a way you're not totally in control of that, maybe you're not in control at all. So the elephant in the room, of course, is restart. And awaiting that news, we're, as a board, very comfortable with staff steering you through even an approved charter if that situation has to change and that's a staff responsibility, it's part of your charter agreement. How have the conversations been with regard to if restart has to become refresh?
Yeah, so-
Dave, I'd like to hear from you too. So, but go ahead first.
Yeah, you know, so we've had some preliminary conversations and listening to some of the things that IPS is thinking about as they're going through their restart, rebuilding stronger campaign. We just really want to make sure that we're, continue to be a listening ear and that, as you can see, we've cast a wider net. So with that, we have to think about if a possible restart with IPS is not possible, we have to think about what does it mean to be co-locating with another school? We have to think about what does it mean to go out and find our own building and start there? And so we've scratched the surface with those conversations and we also have thought about what would it mean for us to just kind of see what else is, what other opportunities are out there possibly further around some of the other townships. So all of those conversations have been broached. We're ready and willing to navigate any one we need to, but we're hopeful that there will be some opportunities within IPS.
Mr. Roberts, you want to comment on that at all from the board side?
Yeah, I would just say from the board side, our overarching principle is that we want to partner with the partners that need us and where we're welcome and we feel like we have something to contribute. And so that partnership is key and driving and we want to listen to our partner in IPS and where we can add the most value.
Okay. It's great to hear from you both. You know that in the event my colleagues in this body approves a charter, we'll be back with my admonition that I left with last time, we're going to need evidence because it sounds really, really good. You're going to have a lot of kids, as Pam Hickman mentioned, that are going to need to catch up. And that may slow down the fun stuff. And so we, our job will be to really review that and look at making sure that we're not trying to just be adequate, we're just not measuring ourselves against the sort of easier measurements, which there are a lot of not-so-good numbers out there. And that you're going to aspire to engage at a higher level, to engage at a level that is going to get kids able to read and fast and doing those things. So I congratulate you on this evening and I do congratulate you on the work that you've done since, since we saw you a few weeks ago. I do very much appreciate that. I wonder if my colleagues, any of my colleagues have any other further questions? So with that, we do, this is a public meeting and we will entertain public comments if we in fact have some, and we do. We would ask, oh my gosh, here we go. I feel so safe in here. We will ask you to please keep your comments relatively brief, we don't want to cut you off. And if somebody has said something in front of you that you wish you would said, you can say what she said. But we will start with citizen Libby Nayler. As you approach the podium, will you still please tell us your name so that you, so we get that on the tape, please?
Sure, of course. My name is Libby Nayler and I'm here to ask you to consider offering Brandon House the opportunity to open Engage Community Schools. Mr. House successfully turned around schools in other areas like New Orleans, so his school model has been tested and proven. His schools saw academic improvements within the first year and those improvements continue to stand. The changes that he made brought families and communities together. We need more leaders like Mr. House in Indianapolis and I'm excited to see what he can do with the students of Indy with his game-changing and innovative ideas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, Karen Taylor. And as Karen comes to the podium, I'll remind you that we have received public comments online. We have them, we have read them. Mr. House, they're very complimentary. And, but we want you to know again, and those of you watching at home, that that process is available to you and you can go online and make comments for these in advance of our meeting if you'd like. So Karen Taylor.
Good evening, Indianapolis Charter School Board members. It is my pleasure to speak to you about Brandon House and Engage Community Schools. We are all familiar with the phrase, it takes a village to raise a child. As far as schools go, we know who the villagers are, but who is the village? For decades, it's been teachers and parents, but Mr. House is adding a critical component to the village, the community. Engage Community School will focus on supporting the whole child in a place-based instructional approach. Schools that are well-connected to the local community can create a safe and supportive environment inside and outside of the classroom. We know that strong ties with the community lead to more partnerships and programs, which in turn can be utilized to directly support instruction and empower students to learn. The ultimate goal of education is to prepare our citizens to thrive in the real world. In order to reach this goal, Mr. House and his team will find the right relationship among school personnel, families, and community members to give students experiences that will give them the knowledge, skills, and disposition to do just that, to thrive. When all stakeholders, teachers, parents, and community have a shared responsibility for the achievement, accountability, and success of schools, everyone benefits. I for one am excited to see what this new village does for the children of Indianapolis and I am confident that with the experience and vision Mr. House brings and brought to you this evening, it will soon be a pillar of excellence for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carrie Duff, who's an educator, I believe.
Yes. Good evening. I'm here to speak to you about Brandon House and Engage Community Schools. I had the pleasure of teaching with Brandon at the very infancy of his career. We both accepted teaching positions at Thomas Gregg Elementary, School 15, a turnaround school in IPS. It was evident from the very beginning that he was special in the way he connected to his students, families, and community. I saw glimpses of his excellence way back then and over the last 14-plus years, he has grown to be a proven leader that we are so lucky to have back here in Indianapolis. What he wants to do with Engage Community Schools is both unique and necessary. Our students need to feel connected to their communities and be able to learn from the leaders in those same communities. They must see themselves as leaders and know they too can make a difference. And I believe Mr. House is the exact person we need to build this type of new environment in our schools. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very, very much. Misty Hunter, also an educator and a parent.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us this evening. My name is Misty Hunter. I have been an educator for about 17 years as well as a parent. I have been a parent with a split family. I have older children who are now in their twenties and I have elementary-age children now that are presently in school. So I have been able to witness throughout the years, changes in education and our community. I think what Mr. House has presented, the innovation, the community engagement is amazing. It's exciting. I feel that as a parent, it is very much what is needed. And I think that Erin touched on the village that we need and I will tell you that once in a Facebook statement, I saw a parent say, I don't need a village. I don't need you. I can raise my children. And in that moment, it made me sad as an educator and a parent because I thought, no, we need our community, we need our friends, we need our educators, we need our school, we need our community. And I think that that is exactly what Mr. House has presented to us in our Engage Community Schools. I look forward to seeing the growth and the changes that he brings here to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyra Bowerman. And then the educator and a parent.
I am Kyra Bowerman. I'm a parent, educator, and resident of Indianapolis. And I'm just kind of here speaking on behalf of Engage just because as a parent whose child is going into first grade this year and is in the process of looking for schools for her to go to that I think would be beneficial to her, that would support her and her individuality coming into herself. And I spoke with Mr. House a couple of times about just his vision for his school, the project-based learning parts of it, the intense focus on literacy and mathematics to prepare his students globally for, you know, whatever it is that they want to do, whether that is employment, you know, post-secondary schooling, military, whatever it is, meeting students where they are. And I am a proponent of that because I am an educator at the high school level and I know that there's a need for supporting students, meeting them where they are. And so if I can support that, I can support that from anybody who is willing to put in the time and effort it takes to meet kids where they are, to help them get to where they want to go, I am all for it. And especially since I am in the process right now of looking for such a place for my own children. And that's pretty much all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. And Gerard Hubbard.
Good evening, board members. My name is Gerard Hubbard. I am a local clergyman of Mount Piscobaptist Church and community advocate and I am affiliated with Young Lions Action Network. I stand here today as a student, I stand here today as a community member, and I stand here today as a clergy member. And I truly believe that today, we have a problem. We have a problem where in our society, education is confused with indoctrination. We have a problem where children, their minds are glorified, but their social realities are demonized. But I see that there is a solution and I believe that Engage is that solution. James Baldwin says that not everything, not everything can be faced, but those things that can only be, there's only things that can be fixed once they're faced. And I truly believe that Engage is focused on fixing those issues and not trying to cover those issues, not gaslighting those students, but acknowledging the social realities in which they face and allowing them to rise in consciousness and encouraging them that we don't just want your mind, but we want your body to be edified and magnified. Thank you.
Thank you and apologies Gerard for mispronouncing your name. That is everyone that's on the list. Is there anybody else that we need to hear from? Would you please tell us your name, sir?
Yeah, Don Wetrick, I am a board member and also a 25-year educator. By the way, that was incredible, thank you. A couple of things I just want to say on behalf of being a teacher and also on the board. There's a couple of axioms here that we always talk about when, like students always say, they don't care how much you know until they know how much you care, right? That goes beyond the teachers, that also goes to the community. Brandon has an opportunity to engage with community because they're like, in my work as a teacher, the community wanted to work with schools, they didn't know how to get past the front door or they didn't know who to go to. I think that there's a real opportunity here to get more students engaged, no pun intended, but to also not just, like seeing a problem as an opportunity. So project-based learning, absolutely, problem-based learning. And I love the last speaker that were talking about not just indoctrination, but understanding real problems. And the community is not just going to service up opportunities, they're going to say, here's something we're, like, we're dealing with. And I talked to a lot of employers, like, man, I wish more students had this skill. Having a greater opportunity to work with community members and community businesses and leaders to say, we are wanting to identify this, if more students would focus on that. And then being a real incubation center of those kind of skills that meet the community where they are. And I wouldn't be here if I didn't like truly believe in the leadership. And what a great opportunity. And the last point, this isn't something we want to do status quo or just a little bit of a tweak on something that is reshuffled. This is a really awesome, brand-new approach that I think that a lot of people are going to be attracted to and a lot of, once we get moving, there's going to be a lot of momentum to be able to have parents have access to opportunities. Because at the end of the day, it's not, of course, just the core education is important, but those access to opportunities. And I think with a greater community engagement like this, that's absolutely attainable. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. With that, I'll check in with my colleagues. Any other questions or comments? Marco?
I just have a quick comment. I want to thank the board guys for the support that you're giving to education and in this case, to Brandon. He shows passion, he shows dedication, so thank you guys, thanks. That's all.
Anyone else? Staff, is there anything else that you need to say? And with that, I will entertain a motion so that we can act on this proposal.
I would make a motion that we approve the charter for Engage as stated.
Second. Pam Hickman and Dr. Adams moved. Pam Hickman, second. We'll do a roll call vote, as is our custom. Marco Dabinkas?
Aye.
Dr. Adams?
Aye.
Pam Hickman?
Aye.
Is there a daga? And aye from the chair. Congratulations. Engage will look forward to continued progress and remember, evidence when you come back. And with that, and thanks to all of you, whether you were speaker tonight, you're directly connected to the work that's ahead. We need all of you involved all the time and being here matters. So thank you for participating by being here. If you're watching on television, thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. With that moved and seconded, this meeting of the Indianapolis Charter School Board is adjourned.